And as everyone knows, usually we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We're still going to do that. But there is a group of scouts from Troop One Mendon who's working, who are working on the citizenship in the community merit badge. Some of them need to lead a ceremony and they need to attend a meeting. So they're all lucky that they get to be here tonight to this meeting. But I'm going to ask the senior patrol to come up and lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd all please stand with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to move around on the agenda a little bit and we're going to take item number five first, which is Senator Lou Burtonazi presenting the Outstanding Citizenship Award to the Town of Mendon. So I'd like to introduce retired Senator Lou Burtonazi. He spent 10 years in the House for us, 16 years, 17 years in the Senate, retiring in 1996. And he's been doing other good works since then. So it's good to see him. And at one point, he actually ran the Mendon Drive-In. So his roots are here in town. But I want to introduce you, Senator. Thank you for coming. And we have some scouts that are going to help you do your presentation.
At one time, too, while I was running the drive-in theater, I lived here one summer on Providence Road.
Okay.
I've forgotten the woman's name who rented her house to us. But she was very kind at the time. A couple of you are new, not you, Lauren. So let me just explain what this is. When I left the Senate, I wanted to do something from utilizing the interests that I'd built up while I was in the legislature. And my interests were in three areas. And one of them, obviously, was civic. And in the civic idea, we tried to come up with a plan that would best do something to improve things in that area. And so we came up with a plan that we would give an award every two years to the community of the 19 communities that I represented, of the community that had the best voting percentage for those two years. That is, the two local elections, sometimes the presidential election primary, the regular primary and the regular election. During that time that we were trying to decide, we figured that we wanted to be sure not to penalize the smaller towns. So we decided that we wouldn't use numbers but percentages of numbers. So that while, obviously, the larger towns would have more people voting, the thing that we were interested in was the percentage of those people who were registered, not of the general population, but those who were registered to vote, who actually came out to vote. The town clerks, over the years, have been very, very helpful. In some cases, they had to be chased a little bit to get the results. But for the most part, they've been very helpful. And what we've done is we held a meeting first with all 19 town clerks right in this room. The Mendon Town Clerk was kind enough to agree to host the meeting. And we announced that what we would be doing is we would be giving to the town that had the best voting percentage of those who were registered. We would give the town clerk and the Board of Registarians $1,000 to use in any way that they see fit to improve the numbers of people who might vote in the future. We would reward the selectmen by awarding a plaque that would be a rotating plaque. Every two years, we would add the list, the names of the town that was the newly awarded winner for those two years. And we would reward the people of the town, who actually are the ones who win the award, because they're the ones who come out to vote. We would give them a banner that they can use in any way that they see fit. The banner gives them bragging rights for being the best voting community for the last two years. Since we started this 18 years ago, since we started it then, the town of Sutton was the first winner. And then the town of, not in any order, but the towns of Douglas and Grafton won also. The towns of Upton won twice. The town of Northbridge won twice. And now, I'm proud, happy to say to you that you can be proud that the town of Mendon has won twice. I was here once before to make this presentation, and I'm happy to make it again now. So if Ellen would, is Ellen here? Yep. Ellen, you get the $1,000. This is usually what I forget, but I remembered this time.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate and accept this for the Town of Mendon. Thank you.
And this is the plaque that you can hang in the town hall, showing Mendon having won for the 2009, 2010 period of times, and again, 2021 and 2022.
Well, thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much. Now, if you all would come up here.
If this council can help open this banner up and put it right across in the game with the pictures.
Just hold. Yeah. Come on out. Do you have any registrars?
I thought one was coming, but I don't see her. So she might be online. They could be online.
Okay, Johnson. Oh, can you remember where you stood and somebody, Ellen, would you write the names after these left to right?
Sure.
All right. Three, two, one. Awesome. Thank you.
Now you want to turn?
Sure.
We can rotate so the people.
It's like a fire drill.
Yeah.
Everybody goes the wrong way.
Just so everybody on the camera can see it. Tune in.
Can they read?
I will.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Senator.
Well, thank you all, and congratulations.
All right. Put it right next to that. And then Ellen, if you can, the next, once you're done with that, the next item on there has to do with conflict of interest testing requirements, since you're here. Take that next.
So I know, Mike, you're, I think actually all the Select Board is aware that the state has come out with a new ethics training test. It hasn't been updated in 12 years. They launched a portal that the town of Mendon agreed to participate with. So that test is now available. And in order for me to get everybody into the portal, I would like to require everybody to retake the test. It is a new test. I know it's not going to be a popular decision, but it's a new test, so it's not the same as the one that they've taken. They will not have to print out paper certificates anymore. The portal will tell me who's taken the test, who hasn't taken the test, and it just stays there. Each member will have to log in under their own town email preferably. If they don't use their town email, then it's going to be considered public, their personal emails will be considered public record. So the state is recommending that everybody gets in there. And then this system will remind everyone 30 days before their due, their personally due. So, I mean, I'll be out of that. I'll just be putting in how much time before they get reminded and how many reminders they'll get. And it will be on the individual to check their emails and log in when they're up. So the requirements are the same. Every two years for the test, every one year for the acknowledgement, and it's just a quick login. The test itself will take, it took me about an hour, I would say. Not as many mini quizzes, there's only two in the whole thing, but there is more in-depth talk about, more about what municipal ethics would be. So I just wanted to tell you guys that I wanted to send out the email probably beginning of next week. Other towns have already sent out their emails, and it's kind of bogged down the system, so I'm glad I kind of waited. And then everybody will have to retake the test and get into that system.
So there's no way to log in, assuming there's no way to log in if you just took the test a month ago or two months ago and uploaded your certificate? So they're thinking?
I don't think so. Yeah. So if somebody doesn't comply and they have a valid certificate, then we can deal with that if they're going to be reappointed or something then. But I don't believe that, because the state doesn't know who took it. I'm the only one that knows who took it, because it didn't stay in the state portal before.
Oh, understood. I was just wondering if you could upload your certificate?
That'd be nice. I don't think you can, but I can ask.
It would be easier, easy if everybody would just comply between now and the end of the fiscal year and just do it.
Yes.
But there probably will be a way to figure it out for somebody who isn't expired, if they'll allow it.
Yeah. I took it myself. I wasn't due, but I took it just to see what everybody was going to be up against. And it's not difficult. It's just watching videos and taking the test. But you do have to create an account, and there are some people who are computer-averse. And I welcome those people to come see me, and I can help them get logged in and set up. Also, people that are town email-averse, I would recommend that they have their, they log in under their town email, but have their town emails forwarded to their personal emails, so they never miss the reminders. And I can help them with that, too. So basically, I gave you a copy, it should be in your packets, of the letter I'd like to send. If anyone has any feedback on that, I probably won't send it till next week. And I welcome any feedback there. And that is all.
Thanks, Ellen. Let's circle back to number three, citizen statements and petitions. Is there anybody here in the audience who's tied in remotely that wants to make a statement or any petitions to the Select Board? Okay, then let's jump down to number seven, consider the appointment of police officer Catherine Ellard. Chief Kersey.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief Kersey.
This chair's really low. I'm sitting on the floor. So asking it tonight to appoint Catherine Ellard to the position of police officer. Catherine is from Bellingham, comes to us after graduating in April 2022 from the Merrimack College Police Academy. She also received her master's in criminal justice in May of 2021. She worked for a short time for a Merrimack Police Department, and now we look forward to having her come through our FTO program and serve the Town of Mendon.
Thank you for applying, and congratulations. Can I have a motion?
Move to appoint Catherine Ellard to the position of Mendon Police Officer at step one, pay rate of $1,092.30 per week.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to town.
Can we get a quick picture?
Sure. Absolutely. Seems to be the night for it. No banner for this one.
Ready? Three, two, one. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. We look at number four, corresponds to the board.
Thank you.
I think Ann Mazur is on.
Yep. Hi.
Ann, do you want me to read this letter? Do you want to read this? Let me just, so this is a letter sent from Lauren Morris. She's the Hearing Office of the Department of Public Utilities, and it was addressed, this is addressed to her from the...
It would be to her from the Select Board.
Yeah, this is the one that's going back to her, right? So it's addressed to various members of the state boards and committees. But it says, "Dear Ms. Morris, Mendon applied to the Department of Public Utilities, the DPU, for approval for Community Choice Power Supply Program Aggregation Plan, starting on August 21, 2019. Mendon has been working with the Colonial Power Group, and our records indicate that Mendon has fulfilled all the requests from the DPU. However, Mendon's application has still not been approved. We're coming up on three and a half years and waiting for approval, which seems an inordinate amount of time. Mendon has worked to be compliant with DPU's requests. Below are the dates of DPU requests and Mendon's responses, which were responded to in a timely manner. First set was issued on October 28, 2020. Response is submitted 11/19/2020. Second set, 11/3/20. Response, 11/19/20. A third set, 6/1/22. Response is 6/3/22. And then a fourth set on 6/22/22, with our responses submitted 7/7/22. Mendon residents would like to have the opportunity to have clean Class I renewable energy at a competitive price. The Mendon Senior Senate Director has said that many of the seniors are having difficulty keeping up with their electrical bills. A community electric aggregation program could help relieve some of the pressure. We respect the request that you expedite this process to help Mendon move forward with this program. If more information is needed, please let us know as soon as possible. Assistance in this situation would be greatly appreciated." And I had, this was brought to my attention by Ann, so if you want to chime in with any additional information that you have, that'd be great.
Yeah, just that it's been, we started the process four years ago, and it really should be a pretty routine process, but it's taken a long time. And so I think that this letter might help move it along. Also, having a new governor might help. And I just wanted to mention that this doesn't commit the Town of Mendon to anything. It just allows us to look at an aggregation program.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Ann about this process? Or anybody who's here remotely that has any questions?
I have a question in general about aggregate programs. So for those Mendon residents who have signed up with a competitive rate, would that affect them in any way? Or is this only people on the basic utility rate?
Yeah, it would not affect people that are on a different plan. It would only be people that are with the basic national grid.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I don't think, no vote required at this point. It was just informational. So thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Ann.
All right. And now we have number eight, the Clough School lease, I think is, Town Council on? I know we spoke about this two meetings ago, and Town Council reviewed the language, updated it, and I just have it for us all to sign.
Ann has her hand up.
Okay. Go ahead, Ann.
Sorry about that. I just, so this letter that I just presented to you would be coming from the Select Board, so you don't need to vote on that?
Right. No, well, it's actually, well, no, it's actually signed by me. I know this is the response to the other letter that I saw. And this is, because we, the way it was explained to me is because we have already submitted this to them four times now, this is just a letter for me as the board just, as the Chair just reminding them that we've already applied to this multiple times, so we're just urging them to act on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So number eight, again, is the lease agreement. And to just explain it quickly for everybody who's wondering, this is a lease agreement between the Town of Mendon and the Mendon-Upton Regional School District for the Clough School. And it's a lease that was previously issued, and it's just, it needs to be renewed. And we actually voted at town meeting, back at the special town meeting, to authorize this. So it just needs to be signed for the five of us, and I'm not going to read through the nine pages. Just, I just ask you all to remember to just to sign this document.
Sure.
What's the, I just see that it's highlighted in number three on the first page of the start date. Did they get a start date in there? Because I think we had to backdate it, because it expired maybe?
I don't know if it needs to be, the reason it was left blank was, I don't know if it needs to be backdated to when the previous one expired, or if it was the date at the town meeting when we voted?
Well, the town meeting just gave us the authorization to enter into the lease, so I would have to assume it would go back. But we'll let legal enter that date in.
That's, right. That's the only, that's the only issue that...
I move to enter in a 20-year lease agreement between the Town of Mendon and the Mendon-Upton Regional School District for the Clough School. Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much. Now we go on to the budget review. Fincom, do you want to call, do you have a quorum? Do you want to call to order?
We'll open the Fincom meeting at 6:56 PM.
So for those who have the original agenda that was posted, BVT has been moved. So we're going to start with Recreation Budget first.
Just pulling up the document. I'll share it.
Is there any way, so we're waiting, Tom Bellin was going to try and join us, but then also Ben was going to try and join us for water. So I don't know, did you have somebody coming for Tree Warden or someone else?
I don't know if the Tree Warden is...
He's here.
Are you ready? Why don't we start with the Tree Warden then? Ted Steves, if you want to come up and...
I would love to.
Great. So we'll start with you and...
Where should I sit?
Wherever you like.
Take the new comfy chair.
This one? No, 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 no.
That one right there.
This is Laura's seat.
There you go.
Oh, but I like it. Okay. This is new for me. Hi, guys.
How's it going?
Good. Busy, busy.
So let's pull up the budget.
I just pulled out your email. Budget, this was as of 2/1/23. Actually, we can pull it. It's fine. Yep. I should say, oh, my God.
Just excuse me. That was in the Board of Health meeting.
They were probably very confused.
Yeah, they were probably wondering why the budget's up on there.
Was there something posted in there from the Tree Warden? I don't remember seeing anything when I looked.
Well, it should be in the budget spreadsheet that it's in there. Just that I don't think this, I don't think I have it mapped in this one.
Line 503.
Where is it?
503. No problem. I did do this. So we run some tab. What's happening? Let's go to your 25th department. All right. There we go.
Can you see that okay?
I think so.
Why don't you start with just kind of giving us an update on how the...
Where we are with the, I don't know exactly how much we've spent to write today, because I know Bob did some work last week, which he's not submitted for, I think a day. He had a $2,500 a day in. So I'm not sure, I don't know how up to date this is.
Well, what we're looking at here is just your next year's request, right?
Okay.
So what we're showing is... Cutting, sorry, tree cutting, conservation, the same. Tree cutting at the park, the same. Contracted services. So we're back down to the original $33,000 ask. I believe we're at, we're showing a $64,351, which was probably the transfer at special town meeting for the extra money that was needed. That's why it's showing an inflated number this year.
Well, it initially was, we were trying to recoup monies from the previous year that hadn't been spent or that hadn't been billed on time. There was a carryover, so we, we missed the, because of a snafu, a date that was misplaced on the invoice, even though the work was done in '21. So that was what I was, that was the 12K I was asking for.
Right, but that was...
And then some additional.
Right. So the, but that's bills of a prior year. So that's going to not show, I believe that's going to show in that, in that line item because it wasn't an expenditure.
I don't know.
I don't know how it shows, but what I'm seeing is we, I do recall, and I don't remember the exact amount, it's probably in here.
What'll happen, the unspent ones will be captioned free cash in the fall, and we'll take care of the fall town meeting.
Right, but showing that $64,000 number, that was that, that increase because there was extra cutting that was going to be done this year, which I believe is actually going on right now, right? Is that what they're doing? Or is that national grid?
No. Well, you're talking about grid, but that's not, that's not a town.
Got you. But there was, didn't you, didn't...
Yes, I asked for more money and you gave it to me.
Okay, at the, at the special town meeting. So there's, that's why that's showing that, that bigger number. So now we're back to the budget here, just showing level of service.
Right.
At, you know, $33,000 for the contracted services, $7,000 for supplies, $300 for equipment maintenance.
Yeah. I've got to sit down with Jody and go over some of these line items. Everything is contractual. We don't have supply, I don't have a tree department. We don't, we don't have supplies. All that money, my understanding is the tree budget's about, is 50 grand, right?
Forty.
Wasn't it, wasn't it 50?
It's been 40.
Oh.
There's, it is, again, if you look at the line items, contracted services is 33, and then 7,000, I'm sorry, tree cutting 33, contracted 7,000 for 40,000. Then there's still, if you've read in here, we've got 3,500 for conservation, 1,500 for, for cutting for the parks department.
That's dispatching.
No, I'm looking at tree warden salaries.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was answering.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm looking at the calculated line item and it's, it's, I was incorrect at 40. I apologize.
Yeah. 49, 100.
Yeah, everything, everything together is just, that's I was, that's I was building up to. Everything is just, just 100 bucks shy of 50, 50K.
That's what I thought. So we're not there yet. We're, you know, I'm at the mercy of our contractor. Like, he can't just give me days whenever I say, hey, we're ready. So I wait for him. We will drive around. We're always a couple of days out. We know what the next hit list, is on the hit list going into the next round of tree work. But we're doing one day at a time. I try to get them, on average, I get them every once, every two, three, three to four weeks. So we're going to get, we're going to, we're going to exhaust our budget, no problem. As we get closer, I'll be in touch with Jody and make sure we're, we're right there. Because I want to use it all, because we've got more trees and we have money.
Right. And that's, that's great. What we're discussing tonight, though, is next year's budget, right?
Right.
So if you're saying that these items are not necessary, such as tree cutting, conservation, tree cutting at the park, I mean, if, if everything is all subbed out anyway, I'm not sure why they are separate line items.
I don't know either. That's why I need to sit down with Jody.
Yeah.
I inherited this. Yeah.
And I, and I get that. I'm just, you know, it might even be a question for Alan. I mean, maybe they did certain things themselves and that's why those, those items were there. Obviously, he's not here to answer those.
And I think some of this has been the migration to the new, to the new software. And these are, these are numbers pulled from the other one.
So, but I mean, find it, what was things just rolling to free cash? So, I mean, is meeting and dues, do you have meetings and dues?
No.
And that you go to? Is there travel and training that you need to go to?
Nope.
I mean, these are line items that have carried through year after year.
Forever.
So if it needs to be cleaned up, I would say that, that let's get it, let's get them, get that cleaned up and then put this on, on the end list to come back just to review again to make sure we're all in agreement on how it's handled.
The only line item that would, that would pertain would be the annual tree warden meeting that happens, that I did not go to. I had a conflict, but I would, would like to go to it in the future. So I don't know if that, that will not fall within contractual services.
Sure.
Other than that, and I don't even know if there's, I don't even know what they charge for that. It can't be...
Well, there's a $100 line item for tree warden expenses, meetings and dues.
And then there's 600 for training and travel.
Right.
So is it a meeting and training? I think that that, like you said, just either, you know, get with Jody or Kim and get this cleaned up.
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll be ready for the, that final, you know, come back on that, whatever meeting it might be.
Right. I would like to consolidate it all to contractual, except for a couple of miscellaneous like that.
You got to keep your salary up. You got to...
Well, there's my salary. I haven't drawn anything, but yet. And, and, and that, and that meeting, that forum that they have for tree wardens, other than that, we don't have a tree department. We don't have a chipper or anything like that. Everything's contracted.
Yeah. Aiden, you're not using chainsaw to cut it down yourself, right?
No. No, but I mean, I've done things with my pickup because I am a tree guy.
I get it.
And I, you know, I'll grab a limb that's on the side of the road because I can.
Yeah, I get it.
But...
Well, you know what? Why don't we let the town administrator, she's, she just came on and she has her hand up, so...
Sorry, I didn't see.
Well, it just...
Oh, Kim.
Yeah, Kim just...
Awesome. Hi, Kim.
Hi, guys. So, right now, for the tree warden's budget, some of the lines have been consolidated in the new system. But for this next year going forward, and I do understand that most of the work is contractual, I think we really need to get a better handle, at least more than one year's worth of data, before we make any permanent changes to what's actually required in that budget. Because it's very possible as Ted goes through this next year, he uncovers things that he doesn't know yet might be part of, or need to be part of this budget, right? So it'll all be, expenses will all be approved as one line anyway, right? But I think for a matter of sort of consistency, I don't want to remove extra lines and amounts at this point, just in case. And going back to the original number, these are the amounts, you're correct. We did transfer a certain amount based upon a bill that was about $17,000. So we did, I did an average, you might remember, about how much they're actually spending per year. And that's how we ended up with the amount that we ended up transferring for him for the rest of his last fiscal year. But for this, next year going forward, we've started just back at the base, right? So we can sort of watch again. We, my, and really only chiming in to say, we need a lot more data before I really want to make any permanent changes, right? That shouldn't impact the way he's doing business at all. I just want more data.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. While we got you here, do you, is there anything you want to report on with the progress with national grid?
Yeah, let's talk about that. So I've met with grid. I've spent a lot of time with them. They've got quite a slew of personnel. They're all on my phone now. So, which is good, because I need, in my travels, a lot of the trees that I see that are problem trees are on the wire side of the road. We can't touch those. That is grid. So I have several contact people. I know who to get, you know, Dave Donahue and Greg Bemis and these people that I can call and I can, and I can give them a pole number or an address and tell them, and they're, they're pretty responsive. Sometimes it's a waiting game, but at least I, at least I have a voice with them now. And I'll tell you what, they've been pretty good to deal with. And, you know, we went around about the, the work they're doing on North Bridge, and they haven't yet started North Ave. And, you know, we were very sensitive about the scenic road thing and, and I, you know, I, Mike and I had a good discussion about it, and so Brendan and I did too. I think we're all on the same page. You know, I, I will, I will tell you, I, I do defer to safety.
That makes sense.
I, I, I am not interested in keeping trees that are going to be a hazard or, or are a hazard. That's always a tough call. You know, I have to determine what's a hazard tree. And I take that seriously and I, I do the best I can. And they've been good to deal with, you know? And I have pulled back on some, one tree in particular on North Ave that I, I had given them the go-ahead to take down, but I backed off at night and they, you know, I'm hoping that they, they got the message. I'm sure they did. Because it's kind of iconic. You know, you drive down the road and certain trees pop out and, but they're trying to, they're trying to get some birth between their power lines and the trees. And they, so they have their parameters and, but every tree is, is a discussion. And some are close and, but, but I've seen the work they've done. They're very professional. They use Stanley Tree. And, you know, they don't just hack away. They, because we, we try to do, we try to prune versus removal when we can. And I've been in the industry for half a century, so I know what good tree work looks like. And they do good work. They do nice cuts right back to the main. They leave a little collar. It's very clean. So they're doing a good job. I, I like it. I know, I know it feels a little aggressive, walking, going down North Bridge Ave. I mean, they took some trees down. Over here on Providence, they, they knocked some trees down. But they're up in the wires. I mean, it's tough. It's tough to see them go, but you know what? It, it, it has to happen. So I haven't seen anything, I haven't seen them do anything distasteful or out of line.
How about the stumps? Do they take the stumps?
Nope. They don't touch the stumps. The wood, they do the same thing that we do in the town. They ask the people who live there, do you want the wood? If not, they, they, they try to get rid of it, or some people want it and it's, that's why, you see logs out here. If you see them out there in another two months, it's going to be an issue. I'm going to have to call somebody or we're going to have to deal with it ourselves.
So will they, if they cut the trees down?
They're supposed to get rid of the wood.
They are supposed to get rid of the wood.
All the, all the brush gets chipped into a truck. That's gone. But the logs are always an issue. But their job is to get rid of them. And they have contacts through the town, just like we do. People who want the wood, people who'll take the wood.
But there's, but there's a mechanism if they're not gone, because it can be a public safety issue.
Oh, they're supposed to be gone.
You can call them and they'll come back and take them.
They're supposed to, yeah.
What if the resident wants to keep it and doesn't?
Then, well, then we need to have a conversation with the resident. Because, you know, if they, if the resident wants the wood, they leave the wood, right there. Right there on the side of the road. Not where a car can hit it.
On the...
Well, that's, well, that's not an issue then, right?
It really shouldn't be. They should get it on the inside of the wall. It should be, shouldn't be on, on the pavement.
On the public way.
It shouldn't be within several feet of the pavement, but that way. So they're supposed to take care of that. They're doing a lot of work right now. They do, because they've got this tree mitigation project going on on, on North Bridge and North. And then they're down here, this is separate project. They're putting, because there's a solar field going in, that they're running power up to the, from a solar field. So there's several projects going on. But I, I will say that they've been very accessible and they've been good to deal with so far. As far as the townwork goes, we're just plodding along. We're probably, I'm going to take a guess, we're probably two-thirds of the way through our budget. And I plan to spend every dime, because we have, like I said, we have more dead trees than we do money. We'll see where we are in June. Bob's doing a nice job. I was contacted by Kathy Schofield. So they have traditionally used some of their historical funds to take care of trees at Founder's Park and such. Now, those two sycamores, you can't miss them. Right off Founder's Park. Beautiful, huge. Well, one of them, the one closest to the record building, has an issue. It's got a big crevice in it, big hole.
It's got a tree.
It's a problem. It's a problem. So Kathy called me and, and they, they use Bartlett Tree. And they're great. They've been around for 200 years, but they get all the money. And they want 200, $2,000 to assess the tree. I said, Kathy, that's too much money. Because you don't get anything but a, but a statement. Yeah, 60% viable. What does that mean? So I'm meeting, I'm meeting with Ralph Briggs of Tree Specialists in Holliston. That's what they do. They go into Boston Common, they, they do the universities, they preserve trees. He's going to meet with me tomorrow afternoon. We're going to look at those trees and he's going to tell me if we can come up with a game plan. So I'm working with historical, just to throw in my two cents.
All right.
Because I have, because I know these people and I'm going, I'm going to use my contacts. And see what he says. Because I think for $2,000, I think, and Kathy, the reason she approached me was because she wanted to know if I could fund it through the, through the tree budget, which I'd be happy to do, because technically it's, it's a tree issue, you know? But, but I can see where those things overlap, because it's part of the historical part of the town, so they've traditionally dealt with it. And we've got another big catalepa behind the records room that's going to have to come down. I'm sure, I'm sure of it. I haven't seen it yet, but she told me about it. Because they're going to do a, they're going to do a, a, a retention around that to keep the water from getting into the records room. And before that, they got to deal with this tree and the roots are going to be there and it's got to come down and blah, blah, blah. So that's going to come out of tree budget, I'm sure, you know?
We actually had a, had a tour on Monday with our new congressman, Jake Oshinklach.
Oh.
And, and Representative Murray were here. And we did the, the walk around and looked at the records room and talked about that and water retention and those issues. So it's, it's on the radar.
That tree, though, that's, that's behind the records room is, how do we handle trees that are on somebody else's property?
I, I got the impression that it was a town tree. It's a catalepa, she told me.
I know, but...
Yeah, but not if it's, if it's, if it's not, because we had that, we had that area...
We just had a survey.
Right.
It's not on town?
I don't know. I'd have to look at the survey.
Yeah, that's the issue.
The lot line is tight.
The lot line is pretty much the building. There's not a lot there. So I don't know where the tree actually lies. But anyway, that's, with something we can look at.
Then if we can get permission from the owner to take it down, we're still going to bear the expense.
Fair.
But that's probably going to be a $3,000 removal. I haven't seen it.
Okay. Does the, as we need to move along here, does the FinCom have any questions for the tree warden?
I don't have any questions. You guys on the line?
Not for me.
None, thank you.
All right, Ted, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to go have dinner.
See you on the next go around. Have a great night. Thanks for everything.
All right. Why don't we go to water next?
Is he okay in here?
Yes, he is. If you guys want to come up to the...
Okay.
I think my glasses are working. That's 560, is that right?
450 for water.
This one says water department.
Oh, I maybe, yeah, I know what she changed it to. That's true.
No, sorry. It's just the, the Excel line item is 560.
Right, well, that's what, right. Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm reading right here, right?
You guys need us to announce who we are for the record?
That would be, that would be great.
Okay. Vincent Roy, I'm, uh, one of the water commissioners.
And then Dan Byer, I'm the clerk for the water board. Um, so our budget is broken up into two pieces. Um, I can't actually really see that. I believe what you have on the screen is the portion that is within the general fund. Um, so the water department is responsible for the town on public water supplies, town hall senior center, parks, library.
Now, do we have the enterprise fund on, on this spreadsheet too?
I do not believe so. Um, I can share, I think it's in the folder, is a document with our enterprise budget.
Well, let's talk about this and Lonnie can see if he can find it. If not, we'll do that later, but.
Did you have, sorry, did you have it in the, um?
I was uploaded into that folder.
The one that's?
It might say like 450. Yeah, like 450 enterprise fund.
Sure.
Um, yeah, so within this budget, um, I adjusted the water salary for COLA, um, but I believe Kim handles those. Um, there's a line for contracted services that pays the certified water operator. We're asking for a thousand dollar increase just based on the existing contract. Um, however, there's some recent developments with the town hall well. I think there's going to be some additional costs. We found out we're going to need a treatment system. Um, which is going to come with some added ongoing maintenance costs, because of course it does. So it's up to you. It might be wise to add some additional funding in that line. Um, and then within the water testing line, this currently includes all the PFOS testing we're doing, which is going to have to continue at $300 a test per month.
Now, is that something that's mandated by the state?
Yeah, so the PFOS is a whole mess. It's a whole, it's a new regulation. It's coming from the state and I believe the federal EPA is looking at it. Everything's in flux. We, the old well was coming back around 11. The new well tested at 5. So they need to do some con- confirmation samples, so it might not, it might be okay. We don't know.
So it's better than, better than what it was?
It's better. Um, but apparently the new federal regulations are basically saying that the correct number is zero. And so they're potentially going to mandate treatment. So right now, they are designing treatment for manganese and iron. And they're going to design PFOS and make it so it can be plugged in in the future, but we may not need to actually pay for it and install it right away. So at least that's a little better. But we're going to have to keep testing for it.
Is there a significant cost increase if we do need to do the PFOS mitigation?
So it's, I think that's what we're going to get in this proposal. That's going to be a one-time request for money for this treatment system. Um, I don't think that would add much more to the ongoing maintenance costs. I believe you have to dispose of the filter material and that's about it.
I was speaking with, uh, Suzuka Halen on the ConCom, who's, you know, that's, that's her forte and she said the same thing you did about these PFOS regulations and the thought is that it's everywhere and everything and it's a very small trace amount. And, uh, but there's definitely going to be a cost. They just don't know what it is yet, because they don't quite know how to.
Well, I want to, I want to be clear on this. So right now, there's only a state regulation, 20 pots per trillion. 20 pots per trillion is like 20 grains of sand and bigger than an Olympic sized pool.
I don't even know how you measure, can you measure, can you actually measure that?
That's how small it is. So that's the state, that's the state limit right now. There is no federal. Right now, it's a health advisory, but the federal government is, uh, they're working on a draft regulation right now. So we're thinking probably within a year, we're going to see a regulation that will be lower than the state standard. If that's the case, the state will turn around and lower its standard as well.
You think it's going to be lower than the state?
Yes, on two of the compounds, PFOS and BFO. P, uh, when you, when you hear PFAS, it's, it's an acronym for four, 5,000 different, uh, compounds, so. Um, EPA is targeting two specific compounds. Right now, it's still speculation. We don't really know what's going to happen yet. We've just heard a lot of talk, so. Um, but, but Dan was talking about that, you know, the treatment is going to also include, um, a type of process that's able to, uh, uh, filter everything out there we're talking about here, iron, manganese and, and, and PFAS as well.
And those numbers aren't accounted for in this iteration of the budget right now that we're planning?
I think you were on the email. I think you're going to potentially want to have a warrant article to set aside money for this treatment system, which we should have an estimate on, but I think it would be wise to include another 1,000 or 2,000 for the ongoing maintenance and consumables for this treatment system, whether that needs to be in our budget or you just want to put it in FinCom reserve. Uh, it's up to you, but I would just be, I think it's coming.
But what we need from the water board is a number, right? We need, we need your board to come up with a number, uh, you know, whether that's from, from contractor or yourself.
I was just going to say, it's going to be provided from a consultant who would probably.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all in the works. Um, and then we can follow up with whitewater. So it's not necessarily an immediate need. It's potentially something that could get addressed in November. I just, it.
But it would be good, because we're, we're February right now. The, you know, the meeting is in May. We have a budget hearing the, the FinCom's got to do in April, so it would be really good if you have a number.
And we'll have that. I wanted, I was just going to ask you, when, uh, when are you going to have the final budget for print for the warrant?
If, if we give you a deadline now of a month from now, is that, can you do that?
You tell me, Dan.
I think we'll be lucky to have the proposal for the treatment system in our hand in a month.
Are they going to, are they going to build that into the proposal?
No, so the, the treatment system is going to be a separate article that we'll have to submit a request for a warrant article or that may go through, we'll have to work with Kim.
Would, well, would they be the ones that would come up with this?
They're going to come up with the money for the system, just to buy the system, install the system and then walk away.
Well, could they, could they?
Separately, I'll have to talk to whitewater.
Yes, Michael, we can, we can give you a number.
We'll get a number.
There's going to be a lot of contingency in there.
Right.
Because it's going to be a rough estimate, but yes, we can give you a number.
So if we have that number in a month, we can build it into the budget.
Correct, we can do that.
Yeah. But I think, I think a thousand or a couple of thousand is a fair estimate right now. We're not talking about some insane number.
All right, so hang on. Couple thousand for the, for the ongoing, whether it's, whatever.
Right.
Think about the system that, you know, you have in your house. You've got to put solid, you know, if you need, if you need that. But you're talking about the system itself is going to be, what are we talking, 10 grand, 20 grand, 100 grand? What, what numbers are we, are we looking at?
I have no idea.
That's what, that's what we're hopefully going to get a proposal on in the next, I think in the next few weeks from what I've seen.
And then the maintenance of that system, you're thinking, but they should be able to tell us what the maintenance monthly cost is of, of that as well.
Correct, yeah.
We can budget that correctly.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Try to get them both if we can. And it'd be nice to be able to get it in the budget, so we're not fighting for it.
And the other, and the other issue about this is there's a, there's a, a boatload of infrastructure money, both federal and state. And they're, they're going through an earmark process right now. So it's, those numbers are imperative, because it's possible that, because it's a, the, the system is a one-time expense. It's possible we could get a grant or an earmark to pay for that.
Correct.
Um, so that's why it's even, it's vital that you get that number to us within a month, so that we can kind of get it into the process and.
Understood.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they're, they're in the process. I know I just talked to Kim today about getting a new proposal for the engineering, so we should have it.
Kim has her, Kim has her hand up.
Oh, I can't even.
So I just wanted to say, Dan and I have already been talking about this. Um, we already did receive an earmark for well work and then we also had money for the well included in our campus project. Part of the issue is the timing, you know, I'm, I'm not sure at this point what if any would be remaining from the campus project that we might be able to use towards this. So my recommendation is going to be for an article for $25,000 for, from CapEx, um, for the warrant. Um, and hope that that's enough to at least, if it's, you know, enough to get us started, right? So that we have some funding available for when we do start to put it together. We'll obviously have more funding available in the fall, if it turns out to be a substantial, you know, substantial cost, but at least we'll have something set aside for specifically this.
Everything we're talking about setting aside is specifically for the installation of a PFAS mitigation system, which is an add-on to.
Well, not just PFAS.
It's iron, manganese and PFAS. I would just, treatment system in general for this building.
There's not a treatment system going in that is for general good well maintenance.
No, this is specific to take out iron and manganese that are above the, the limits.
Okay.
I'm going to tell you, it's going to be a filter system similar to what people put in their homes.
Yeah, I have no idea what a PFAS mitigation system even looks like.
Yeah, yeah, obviously it'd be bigger, because you know, you're handling a lot more people here, but. Um, yeah, so, uh, activated carbon would be the filter for removal of PFAS. And then iron and manganese could be grain sand or some other type of, uh, so it'd be a dual filter type system.
Okay, all right.
And there's not a lot of maintenance with it here, you know, changing the media.
Like prosthesis and all sorts of.
No, no, no. You're talking a very small system, so, yeah.
The good news is we caught this at just the right time. They're working on designing it into the campus project, because it's going to, part of it's going to have to discharge. So I think we got a little bit lucky that they can do this and not have to dig things up again.
But I get what you're saying. You want to have a solid estimate in order to appropriate some money. It makes sense. You don't want to just go blindly saying appropriate money.
Yeah, right. I mean, Kim's throwing up the $25,000 number. I, like, I have no idea.
Yeah, and I, and I, to be honest with you, I don't either right now, you know.
Okay.
So.
All right, anything else for water?
Well, so that's the general fund. And then I don't know if you want to talk about the enterprise fund?
Sure.
And then, so basically for clarity, the enterprise fund is all of the water customers, is about 153 of them. And it's effectively a self-sufficient, um, I guess, accounting method. It's not really an account. Um, the account is self-sufficient. Um, at this point now, we've been operating since 2020. Um, and we actually had a major issue last year with a leak on, two leaks on Talbot Farm. But because of the enterprise fund, we were able to cover those losses and those repairs and didn't have to come back to town meeting asking for taxpayer money to fix the system. Um, so the budget requests, our revenue is increasing by 11%. And our expenses are going up by point 32, or sorry, point 11% and point 32%. It's effectively level funded.
Yeah.
There's really nothing changing. It's written to generate a very small surplus. And that's the money that's hopefully there to build the funds to cover these repairs and, and the future maintenance. Um, I think, you know, you're going to hear all about it at the next meeting with the presentation of the water study. We have a lot of aging infrastructure. Um, that's potential liability. And ironically, the thing on Talbot Farm that failed is the newest part. All the 1940s asbestos cement, like, like where you are, knock on wood, has been fine.
Yeah. Just don't knock on the pipe.
Yeah.
Um, I just have a question. So, um, Hope Dale just announced that they're going to be having a meeting with a possible rate increase. I don't know if this budget actually encompasses that rate increase.
It does not, and I don't think we can, I wouldn't amend our, I, I think we'd have to, if, if that comes to pass in this fiscal year, I think we'd have to come back and amend, amend our fund or do something at that point.
Well, because we haven't gone out to print yet.
Yeah, we, we can see, I, I, I think we need to follow, we talked at our meeting. We need to follow up with Hope Dale of what's going on.
And their meeting is a couple of weeks, I believe.
Yeah, but they haven't, they didn't, not a hearing, just a meeting.
Right, okay.
Well, is it, isn't, isn't the agreement set up that if Hope Dale changes, we just pass it on to the, to the rate payers, right?
Correct.
So that doesn't really require any kind of a vote, but it would be good to get it accurate in the document.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue on iron, so we budgeted 160,000 for the purchase of water. So if Hope Dale goes up and it's more than 160, we would potentially have to get town meeting authorization to spend more than 160,000.
So 160 for the, what, for the public water supply purchase?
That's all the water we purchased from Hope Dale is 160,000.
Isn't that all paid for by the rate payers?
Yes, but, so this account, it's still like, it's a budget within the budget.
Right.
So like our total expenses are 202,000. We can't exceed that number without going back to town meeting to appropriate more money from somewhere.
So the idea is to know between now and, now and April before the hearing, so that we can handle it. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be an additional expense. Hey, Tom, you can, right there for the moment.
No, it would be an adjustment based on a rate.
Higher revenue anyway.
Right.
Exactly. So it doesn't really impact the budget, because it's going to get passed on. It's just going to impact all of us that actually pay for the water.
Yeah, the water department, the enterprise fund is a net surplus and that is the goal.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions about water or how to pay for it?
I don't know what else I'm doing.
All right, thank, gentlemen, thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
Mr. Bell, if you want to take a seat, we'll start talking about your. Dan, we have our presentation?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Thank you very much, sir.
We might want to talk about just the budget first and then, I think part, we had something we wanted to bring up.
Tommy, if you want to sit here, look at, if you can't look at the numbers there, I've got them right here. If that's, if that's easier for you.
I've seen them anyway.
All right.
Haven't memorized them.
No?
Good idea what they are.
Um, all right, so our, our budget request, um, I don't know if you have it. I can go through what we're asking for. Um, and I think so, I believe the intent is to split out parks versus recreation. Um, I just have it all in the one block still. I know that's part of what Kim's been working on in terms of reorganizing the whole chart of accounts. Um, so I'm just, I'm going to go down the list that I have, um, so that, I can't even see that. Thanks. So the, yeah, so it's the same line.
It's a lot easier.
So it's, um, the first line is the maintenance, maintenance wages. That's our maintenance crew. We're requesting a thousand dollar increase, which is due to minimum wage. Um, this is the last year, minimum wage is going up. It's now 15. Um, we also, we were doing 500. We did not have an increase last year because we had asked for a larger increase, which was turned down, and then we ended up just being level funded. So that's why this one is 1,000. Um, the parks director is just COLA. Lifeguard wages, we're asking for, um, a $4,500 increase. And that's minimum wage and it's also money to create a new seasonal, um, part-time beach director position. So as part of the, the work that's being done at the beach, we're starting to look at that program and, and ways that we can grow. And it's time to get somebody over there to do what we're doing with the rec program, to kind of handle some of the day-to-day stuff, so that I'm not.
Was any of this in the revolving fund or is this, this is outside of the revolving fund?
Correct.
Another thing, we anticipate increased traffic with the renovations at the beach. Hopefully the numbers will go up and that's why we're, we feel that we're going to need a director to keep it all together and expand the programs.
Yeah, and that job is posted. It's ideally going to be a working manager who's a lifeguard who also can handle scheduling. So then postage telephone, level funded, sanitary, level funded. Um, in lights, we're asking for an increase of 1,000. Part of that's due to the increase in electric supply. Um, you know, it sounds like, you know, if we can get a regional agreement, that would be wonderful.
What's in the telephone line item? What's that?
That, it's telephone, but it actually covers all of our IT expenses, our internet bill. Um, we have, have had some savings, so thanks to Worldband, we converted to wireless internet, so we were able to, um, drop a phone account down at the beach. Now everything's on VoIP phones, so there's been savings that have been rolled in. I just renegotiated our Fios deal, so we have a little bit less a month on that. Um, and then.
There's not necessarily just, uh, thanks for bringing it up, but it's not. The, the, the town pays a phone bill now that covers all of the VoIP phones, so there was a savings in that line item.
True.
And there was a savings to the town by going to the void, uh, over all of the bills that were being paid, but it just didn't go away. It's somewhere else in the.
It moved.
Yeah. Basically, we weren't paying twice for the service that we already had, basically. So that's part of it. And fortunately, a lot of our, the supply increase in the winter doesn't affect us, because we have no use in the winter or minimal use. And I'm hoping the rates will be back in the summer. Um, and then the other request is I, we'd like to add some more, um, floodlighting in the parking lot through Nat, the streetlights through National Grid. Um, I have talked to them and got some pricing. So specifically, it's going to be a streetlight up by the bathrooms that we have to rent the light, but we will pay for the electricity, because it's on our side of the meter. And then a new floodlight that's going to light up the front of the softball area and parking area when it's very dark at night.
So the light is on your side of the meter, so instead of, instead of paying a flat or a fee for the light, it's just going to be rolled into the electric bill for the.
Right. Well, one of them we have to, because of where it's being installed, grid's going to tap it into the service line.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other one, we would pay the electricity on, because it would be a, basically a floodlight or a streetlight.
Well, one of the other things we're looking at is that actually the police department is, um, doing a survey for, for the town right now to figure out all of the streetlights in town, which ones are on, which ones are off, you know, which ones need to be fixed. And then trying to figure out, because we pay a lot of money, streetlights. And the question is, you know, are we getting what we paid for and do we need them all? So that, that may come into that mix that.
Yeah, if there's more, I mean, so we have some that we pay for. It's the ones in the parking lot. There's a couple on the TAFT Ave side that have just been there in perpetuity that I assume are on the town account. And then we have the, the three we added. And so this would be a few more to light up that area. Fuel, we're asking for $300, again, just to cover the rising cost of gasoline. Um, equipment maintenance, we're asking for $200, which is just inflation, um, increased cost of goods. That's all repairs to the equipment.
So, you know, something else, just to throw out there, I went to the MMA conference and there's a lot of infrastructure money for, um, for electric equipment, including paying for it, paying for electricity. And somebody from the town of Newton, I think, it was, no, maybe it's Lexington, that went green and they said that the only issue is if you get them, you have to get the really good ones. Because if you buy the cheap ones, nobody will use them, because they don't last very long. But it's just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, it's interesting you say that, because that ties into something we'll talk about later with the fact that, you know, we have no electricity in the garage and we park our equipment. So we'd have no way to charge such equipment. Um, but yeah, I think that's something definitely I want to look, I actually had some conversations with Ann Mazur about potentially getting an electric vehicle. Um, there were some really good opportunities. Um, I know the chief, chief was able to get something that I think is going to save a lot of money for everybody. Um, so field maintenance is a big one. We're asking for 1,800 increase, um, and it's because of fertilizer costs. Um, so most of the fertilizer is manufactured in Russia and the Ukraine and the entire market is just through the roof. Um, and this bill, the contract is like doubled. So this account represents, and it actually represents half the bill. So traditionally, we split fertilizer and half of it we pay out of the revolving fund with field use fees, and then half of it we have the town pay to kind of represent the, you know, the community use of the parks versus dedicated athletic use. Um, building maintenance, we're asking for 200, again, just for increased costs. And then in the final, um, travel training and recreation are level funded. And in site improvements, we're asking for an additional 500 to cover some plantings for Memorial Day. Um, I've had some conversations with Ruth O'Grady and there's some, I think it was Norfolk Aggie where they have flower sales and they were able to purchase. And I think this year, the town was able to pay it from somewhere else, but that really should fall under parks, because that's something we're responsible for. But they can get this stuff done and, and, you know, the plantings. So that's, that's our request in terms of the general fund budget.
Any questions? Have any questions?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything. Anybody on FinCom on the line?
Uh, no questions.
And I think, we also briefly wanted to mention, so we, we had put together a small, like, just document, um, about the need for an equipment storage building for parks.
Do you want to put anything on the screen?
So I can, I can actually share this if you want. Um, let me just figure out what window I had it open in. And then here, I printed a few copies here if you want some.
That's two.
We need two more.
It did not.
I'll, yeah, I can email it. Yeah. So, yeah, in order to effectively carry out our responsibilities and maintain the town's parks, cemeteries, landscaping and town properties. The Parks and Rec Commission is requesting a storage maintenance building to be constructed and located on Millville Road at the town park. The building be large enough to house our newer, our mowers, vehicles, related tools, as well as space to store parts and work on the equipment. Parks is responsible for the mowing and landscaping of 15 and a half acres, including four ball fields, a soccer field, the beach, eight buildings, three monuments, seven cemeteries and seven islands. This work requires numerous pieces of equipment. I'm not gonna read the whole list. But we, you know, we have a truck, we have a trailer, we have multiple mowers. Currently, the department has equipment spread over multiple locations. In previous years, equipment was located at the Highway Barn. However, the Highway Department has expanded over the years, has limited space for parks equipment, parking for employees and space to work on our equipment. These locations are all unsuitable for long-term use and have major limitations. Um, and I put a few pictures in here, so we've got stuff at the building shell at Morrison Drive. It's an unfinished shell. It has a dirt floor, has no utilities. The garage door is not tall enough. See, everything's just kind of stuck in there. There's actually a generator that I was using for lights and power at one point. Then we've got the garage at the bathrooms, which is our, I guess, workshop. Um, it's also unheated. It, it's really not big enough for a whole lot of work. It was meant to just store trash cans and like a tractor for the garbage.
Oh, this is, that's the behind the bathroom.
That's the back, yeah.
See, to use something, you have to move stuff around just to take it out.
Do I get it?
Yeah, it's quite the game of Tetris in there. Um, and, you know, and then we've got stuff all over, in Man Hill, the beach, the library rectory building, out back at Highway. You know, I, personally, I feel like I spent a ton of time just moving things versus just working on stuff. And then the other issue is the uncertainty of not having a permanent home. On more than one occasion, we've been forced to relocate temporarily. You know, at Highway, we had to store all the equipment because he had to make room for the plows.
And in some cases, it's left outdoors and, you know, as far as investing in this equipment, it's not ideal.
Morrison Drive, I think the town, you know, looked at selling it. Um, so that, that's another issue. And so to accommodate our, our needs, we're requesting funds for a, the 35 by 65, that should be foot. Building behind the bathrooms at the park. The commission believes this is the ideal location as it has bathrooms, existing utilities. It's located in the largest property the commission maintains. We have received a verbal quote for 290,000. Um, it would include site work foundations and construction. And then the full scope is on the following pages. And there's like a map that shows where it would go.
Is that, is that gonna, um, include heating it as well and bringing electricity to it, or is that just a construction of the building?
The proximity of the, I think that there's work that we would do on our own, like the electricity is right there in the bathrooms, so you just have to run a little thing underground. Heat would have to be done. I don't believe that's in the initial quote, but the building would be somewhat built and insulated so that you could add in heat. Or even just run a, you know, a torpedo heater when you were there.
Oh, no, right, I, I mean, I, I was just only asking because for probably not a ton more money, you can get the electricity.
You could do it while you're do, while you're.
Do a propane heating system that's, that's suspended, you know, that, that, I, I, I hate to see us, I totally agree with, with doing this. I, I, 100%. I, I would hate to see us just piecemeal it though and then say, okay, let's do this later, but let's just.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
If it's 325,000 or 350,000, let's get it, be done, have the, and have the thing done so that you guys are just, you have your permanent home. Everything's in there. It's a heated space. You have an office too, you know what I mean? It, it's a reasonable, and, and maybe your office doesn't need to be there, but.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, the, the conversation I think we had was, we would then look to convert that space behind the bathrooms into an office.
Which makes perfect sense.
And, and a separate bathroom.
I mean, I, I'm 100% for this, and I think that if we, if you, um, if we get a formal quote from them and, and get it, it's something that possibly we would bring to the annual town meeting. I mean, I'm speaking for everybody here, obviously. Speaking myself, I'm very excited about this. I, I've, I've been saying you should do it for a while, so. You got my vote for, to do it, but let's do, do it, like, let's.
Yeah, so include all the extras. I mean, I, I think, yeah, I would, the next step I think would be to write, formally write an RFP and, and get, you know, more concrete bids.
So, uh, GBI.
Something you could, something you could do as an elected board. Yes, I, I, I just, so note, GBI, um, was working off of this scope. And, um, so, you know, it's, it was a verbal quote. They could go to the next step with a written quote, however. The engineering piece, uh, they would include all that, you know, engineering the building, the site and everything else.
Sure.
So it's, if you're, if you put this out there for, you know, RFP or something like that, uh, we would have to get an engineer up front, I believe, or you would.
Not necessarily.
It isn't there, because it, it's, a company like GBI, there are other companies out there like that, right? They're offering you the full package to do the whole thing. And we're gonna get, you know, they're gonna bid on, we would put the RFP out there like this, hey, look, this is what we're looking to do. You can use some of the basic specs. I, I would speak to Kim and maybe even Jack Hunter.
Planner, right.
With the RFP process, just so that you get it exactly right.
True.
But it's not, it's not a, you, this is a specific building. You're looking for electrical, you're looking for HVAC to get it done. This is where it's existing. They propose a sidewalk, come to the sidewalk with the folks. They're gonna have questions, they'll answer the questions, then everybody will bid on it.
So we would, um, approach GBI, for instance, uh, just using that company because they're the ones that gave us the verbal quote for, um, and just say, add an electrical and plumbing.
Well, we would, you'd have to do an RFP.
I'm not sure how the whole process works.
We have to do the same thing we did for the beach. We're gonna have to write a whole thing up.
That's right.
Have town council, you know, I think, luckily we have the template, which I think, you know, the town has now.
I'm just, I'm just asking about the, Lonnie mentioned electrical and other services.
You're just gonna put it in there that you need them. They're gonna give you a bid with, everybody's gonna bid the same package.
Okay.
So you say you want electrical to tie into the existing building or off of the pole that's there.
Yeah.
There's gonna be some site work. They're gonna have to run some pipes. So it's not whatever the, the, the correct way to, to, the, the bid is pretty generic, right? When you're asking for it, this is what we're looking to get. Everybody's gonna bring you the proposal, as long as you have your items in there. And, you know, like you said, you've done it for the beach and you've got the good template to go off of for that, but for the most.
But we had the, the beach engineered. I guess my question is, you know, when you start asking for a building, we have an approximate size. We didn't get into like roof height or anything else. And you start adding in utilities, now you need an engineer to look at it and mark out where the service is going.
Like Lonnie said, we have a, you know, Jack Hunter's our, our planner, and we just have a junior planner that we just got a grant with two, two other towns. So we have resources, um, that, that, you know, you and Dan can, can reach out to Kim. She'll connect you with the right people. And you could cobble together the RFP, like Lonnie said, that includes electrical and everything else.
I didn't know that was available, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and when it comes down to the electrical, it's pretty much, it, everything's just by code anyway. And that, the, the site work is the, is the biggest piece of that, the tie-in of the electrical, you know, it's gonna be a pretty standard. I don't, we're not, you know, we're not building, we're building a, a structure that's a, you're looking for a prefab structure. That's what GBI builds. And you're looking, and, or companies that like that will, that will bid on it. So that whole, I don't know that we need to go have a full, still gonna have to go to planning board and things like that to get, you know, make sure site plan is all correct and all that. So, but those, we're looking for the, the, the bidders to actually supply those plans as part of the project.
I get you, okay.
So we don't need to really bring them, we're saying, hey, you give them, you do them for us. Whereas in the, in the beach, we were looking for a very specific site, site improvement plan with all new drainage, and then we were saying, this is what we need you to bid on.
And that was wetlands and everything else involved. Okay, got you.
This should, this should be much easier than that was.
Ah, you just jinxed it.
Well, that's what I do.
Well, thank you for explaining that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it, yeah, if you think this is worth, you know, I, I think we could pull some more information together and, and bring something.
We've been talking about it for a while, right?
Be voted on or, or considered at the town meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm all for it.
Nothing more frustrating than working in a dark, cramped work.
In six different dials.
Yeah, and having it all there where most of, most of it, most of the lines need to be mowed to have it physically right there.
Right there.
That's working smarter.
I like it.
Great. We still have the recreation piece, right?
I think so. I think we actually went through all the lines. They're just divided differently.
Okay.
And the next go-around will be separated up.
Okay.
I will just briefly add, if so, just a progress update. So the town beach, we just approved the second invoice today. Um, the walls are done. I encourage you, drive by if you haven't been by. It's incredible. The walls are done. Um, I think you still gotta do a staircase.
Level the playground area.
Um, yeah, the prep is all done. We're actually talking to vendors to work on getting bids on the playground equipment. I just followed up with the fencing company. Um, so the, the weather's been great. He's flying. So it's, it's really looking good. And I, I don't know if we formally announced this, so Unilock actually donated all of the pavers.
Yeah, you did.
And they're, they're gonna sell us the block it costs. That's been incredible.
Agreed.
That's great.
What's the timeline for finishing the project?
Hopefully, we're gonna open the end of June. I think.
But part of, part of hanging out, we'll be putting in the Unilock favors.
Yeah.
Throw the water till you do five.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I think the playground will be a little delayed. It sounds like there's some big lead times there. But the, the intent is to reopen the beach and then we can talk about, we'll hopefully do some sort of a grand reopening later in the summer.
Seriously, while we have a, a group of Boy Scouts here who all need service hours for different things. It's a possibility, so keep that in mind, if for some reason.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure it's in your, already in your.
Sean wants some, uh, help there.
We thought about that, like a bucket brigade with the blocks and things like that, so.
I mean, there's, there's no shortage of work. I know, I'm sure, I don't know if Kathy's still on, there's, you know, mulch at Founder's Park, we can certainly put people to work.
Well.
And I know they came and did a bunch of work with, with the, um, some kayak racks and it was somebody's project not too long ago.
Well, if there are scouts, they definitely need service, service hours, so. Alright, so do we, so we've got, we've gone through recreation parks, water, forestry. What about historical commission? Is that you too?
Yeah, I can just, I guess, it's, um, we're just level funded, so there's $500, which is basically postage for the dis, and hearing notices for the district commission. And then 3,500 for the historic commission, which 500 of that, again, is postage and hearing notices, and then the 3,000 is just expenses. Things like signage, pest control, you know, small projects that we can just kind of handle and keep an eye on things. I know, um, one of them, I know Kathy's working on, hopefully a new sign for the next door to go with our beautiful paint job. That sort of stuff.
Alright, does FinCom have any, any more questions about, about the budget in any way, or?
Uh, I don't have any questions. Anybody on the line?
Uh, Dan, this is Nick. Uh, just a quick question. If I remember, last year you were looking to add to staff, and I don't think that went through. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I'm just, a bit surprised that it's not kind of in this year's request. I just wanted to understand kind of how you're able to handle that with the existing staff, or has something changed? That's all.
Yeah, so I mean, the issue, the position was a maintenance position and increased hours. And I, so I believe the town is embarking on a study to look at DPW, um, and kind of an analysis there. So the thought process was to kind of wait and see what the recommendations that come out of that study. You know, our position was basically expanding a seasonal role from like three months to five months. And I think it, it is what it is without it. It's not great. It just, it means that I'm out doing the work in the off-season as opposed to bringing somebody in, so. But I think it made sense to, to wait and see what comes out of this DPW study and then, you know, that, that was the same request and ask for the be, and focus on the beach this year and see if we can build that up. I mean, I, that is a need. I, I think we are going to need to look towards adding staffing in terms of maintenance at some point.
We also rearranged things a little too. We, uh, instead of a five-man crew, we went with a three-man crew. We paid them a little more, but in the end it was actually less money, so a little more efficient with that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the budget?
I'm good.
Alright, you wanna close your meeting, or?
Yeah. Need motion to close FinCom? Second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. 7:56.
Alright.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We have two, uh, two sets of meeting minutes to approve, January 4th and February 1st.
Uh, I move to approve the January 4th and February 1st, 23 meeting minutes.
It's your second?
Apologies, I haven't seen the meeting.
So you wanna, wanna kick it to the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll just, you know, we'll table that to the next meeting, uh, which is March 1st, and we will have just.
Packed agenda.
Just, um, a packed agenda, but it has, um, a couple of very important things. We have, uh, the actually water study committee. Our Congressman Jake Oshinclaus's office is gonna have somebody there. I've also invited our state rep and our state senator. And we also have the, you all should have received a, a copy of the, uh, the DLS study. And, um, their representatives are gonna be there to, to walk through that, uh, at the March 1st meeting too. So, um, if there isn't anything else, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Alright, adjourned. It looks like 7:58.
Thank you, everybody.